Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, welcome the Dawson County Board of Commissioners work session. Today is Thursday, October the sixth, two thousand twenty-two. We appreciate all of you that are with us in person as well as all of those that are with us online. Get right into the new business. First up, we have a presentation of RFP number four oh one dash twenty-two, all-inclusive healthcare services. Sheriff's Office Chief Deputy Greg Rowan, and I think he's got the detention captain with him as well. And so go ahead, Greg.
For sure. Yeah.
Is he trained in medical?
Yeah, yes, ma'am.
Well, okay, that's good.
He's got the medical knowledge.
Okay, well, we're gonna need that.
We'll need that for sure. Absolutely. All right. Okay, so I'm here to present this, the results. I'm probably the best way to put it, this RFP on medical services at the jail for the inmates. So just a little bit of background right off the bat. It is just, we've been dealing with Correct Health, our current medical provider. Since May of two thousand fourteen. And as time has gone along here, we have experienced some price increases. And some service concerns with not having staffing available just due to COVID and the nursing, nursing crisis in general, not having enough. So as a result of that, and some other issues, we decided to put this out for RFP because the contract was essentially at an end. We decided to go ahead and issue a new RFP just to see what else was out there, what other offerings that we could to look at. We also, as part of this project, wanted to include pricing for coverage twenty-four seven. To provide a nurse there twenty-four seven, which we currently do not have and have never had that. But quite honestly, we should have had that all along, if you want to know the truth. As far as RFP process, we did go through. We did go through the normal county procedures with that. Again, Ms. Melissa Hawk has helped us out. And the entire finance department, again, we appreciate them greatly. We could not do it without them. They're wonderful with that. Went through all the proper procedures. And as a result of that, we did receive three proposals. The next slide is the evaluation committee and is our normal staff officers that deal with these things when it comes to the detention center, jail there, as well as Ms. Melissa. So anyway, the scope of service for medical contract for the sheriff's office is, as you see there on this next slide. Again, we're really wanting to push for this twenty-four seven healthcare service there. And we'll talk about that in a little more details we go along. But as you see, the different levels of healthcare, if you will, that we provide inmate appraisals as they come in. Any kind of consultation services, hospital care is built into this, dental care, mental health care, there's all the facets of healthcare, if you will, that are built into this, in this contract. The next page just gives you an example of where we are currently from a perspective is the staffing matrix comparison. It where we at currently, where we are at currently with the number of hours that we have now. Understand there's overtime built into this, so the, that where you see eighty-three hours is a bare bones minimum. There's going to be like a regular overtime process built into this. So it's going to be, the end result's going to be much more than that. But we are asking with the new staff analysis, you see where it certainly goes, but that reflects having staff there. Twenty-four hours a day, and it also reflects having a, an RN that's actually a project coordinator, if you will, which we don't currently have that on. Well, we do, but this, this person would be a more regular fixture there and also part of the healthcare team as well. So with that in mind. The, I guess, kind of a summary, and I don't want to go through all this in great detail. I'm sure y'all have some questions. So Anthony and I will try to answer the best we can. But in summary, there, it, some of the information, if you look at it, it's a little bit confusing, and I don't want to confuse everybody with that. But one thing of note on this particular page is down at the bottom, the, the Southern Health Partners with their cost pool of sixty thousand dollars. That, and it also says anything after that's the county's responsibility. It's pretty vague. It's real, there's really, they don't define it that much. That really opens us up for a lot of issues. Now, don't get me wrong, we could have an inmate that has a serious medical issue that's going to cost. Thousands, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars. That could happen, of course, at any point in time. But they just really did not define it as well as, as we would like to see, and some of the other associated costs. So really, I guess, getting out of the meat of the subject here is the, the pricing that we received. So just to. Just to make, I guess, to make a point on the very first category there, the option A is that twenty-four hour, twenty-four seven coverage between all these parties there, the individual. The three individual companies, and that's their proposal for that. So down at the bottom, the very bottom page, I'm sorry, bottom of the page where it says total. You can see all the other factors that are built into that. And some of these, these rollover costs, these. Exceed certain amount of cost, those are concerning when they're not defined. And I think that's one of the biggest problems we have with some of the other companies, even though there is an issue with correct health as well. Point, I guess I'm trying to make is there's a, I won't call it uncertainty, but there's still a lot of. Just concern over hollow with, with any of these medical providers. And the reason that is, is mostly because of staffing. That's where these dollars are. Plus, medical costs are just on the rise anyway, irregardless, irregardless of the staffing issues. So. All right. So the next page is just the summary of the scores. And all that you can see, I won't go through each one of those necessarily there, they're available for that. And then we'll focus on down to essentially our recommendation. I'll narrow in with that. So we do recommend at this point in time. And I'll try to justify that a little better as we go along to continue essentially with Correct Health. We've been working with them again since two thousand fourteen. They do have surrounding counties, Cherokee, Posey, Lumpkin, they do business with them. So we're familiar with them. We do have conversations with them. So we know kind of the ins and outs of their service quality, if you will, from, from those folks as well. And they, they are just kind of a, as you can see, just from the folks there, the counties that are involved here, they're just kind of a regional standard, almost, if you will. So in the last page is, of course, the continuation of our recommendation. I want to make it clear or make it pointed out here. If you go back to. The page it is here. It's page ten, or actually slide ten. I don't know if you have handouts up there or not. I'll pop back to that real quick. But. Yeah, pricing received. If you look what we're, what's really the contract bottom line agreement will be, or the minimum, I should say, for Correct Health is at seven hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-three dollars and nine cents. However, on the, the last page there, the staff recommendation, go back to that, does have that total of. Not to, not to exceed of eight hundred ninety-four thousand, three hundred and twenty-nine dollars and forty-four cents. And I'm gonna take a deep breath because that's expensive. But that is a knock to exceed. That is a knock to exceed number. And the reason the difference between the seven nineteen and the eight ninety-four is that unknown factor of nursing costs. Because you have nurses that may make thirty-five dollars an hour that work for Correct Health directly. But if they don't have the staffing, then they got to reach out to nursing staffing services, and they may, they may pay them double, and usually do pay them double, you know, seventy-five dollars an hour. But not only that, if they reach out to a staffing service, they have to pay, and I'm just throwing rough numbers out here to you, but say a hundred dollars because the staffing service gets a portion of that. And then they pay the nurse at a higher rate. So there's that great unknown in all of this, and it is systemic across the board with all of these companies. It's not just Correct Health. So they're just having a hard time hiring nurses. It's like having a hard time hiring officers and firefighters and everything else. It's just the days we live in. So anyway, that's the proposal. As I know it, and I'll be more than happy to try, or Captain Davis will be more than happy to try to answer any questions.
Questions for Greg? Is there anything with this that you're getting that we didn't get before? Did you always have mental health services and dental services?
Yes, ma'am. We, we added a little bit of extra time for the actual physical doctor that comes by, a little bit more time for just a small amount for mental health. But the big change really is to have that twenty-four seven coverage, which we've never had before. And I don't know what the statistics are off the top of my head, but. A lot of the medical emergency, we, medical emergencies we have in early hours of the morning, you know, two o'clock, one o'clock in the morning, don't have medical. Coverage there. And that's, it's just, in my opinion, it's just not wise to do that. It's just, it's just better to have that twenty-four hour coverage for these folks.
It's like an emergency, emergency rate.
Essentially, yeah, it really is. And on top of that, we intake inmates all hours of the day.
Yeah.
So we may bring in an inmate at one o'clock in the morning or two o'clock in the morning, three o'clock, whatever, that's having some medical issues at that point in time and need an immediate evaluation. That happens fairly regularly.
Are all of them sick when they come in?
No, but I mean, you have, you know, you have drug, you have under the influence of drugs or even overdose scenarios, alcohol intoxication. No, but it does seem like we got, we have our fair share of medical issues. It's just, I don't know how to explain it, but it's just kind of a fact of, excuse me, a fact of life that, that we deal with, so.
I just wondered if everybody was, if everybody just comes in and they'll say, woo, Dawson County's got some good coverage. We're gonna get in trouble here. I'm sick. I need some.
Let me go get arrested so I get.
That's right.
Get my surgery on my gallbladder.
They're, they're probably spending their money on something else to healthcare.
Yeah, they're taking care of theirself in the wrong way. Yeah, the wrong way.
This invoice monthly, quarterly?
It is, it's monthly, yes.
Greg, what are we paying now?
Well, the, the contract price this, for this year is four hundred and ten thousand. However. For quarter one, they billed us an additional fifty-three thousand dollars. In quarter two, it was an additional seventy-four, I wrote that down here somewhere. An additional contract amendment, essentially, I mean, here's the right numbers. First quarter, fifty-three thousand, five hundred and eighty dollars and two cents. Second quarter, seventy-four thousand, eight hundred and seventy-five dollars and seventy-two cents for an additional one hundred twenty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-four cents. In addition to the contract original price. So these are basically contract amendments. And we still got quarter three and quarter four to go.
So we're already about five thirty.
Yep. So if you figure it's another, say roughly an additional hundred thousand dollars for staffing costs, then we're going to be in that, you know, close, closer to that range. It's not a pretty thing to talk about, I know. It's just, it's just reality at this point. So.
So I guess if it says not to exceed, what happens if it does exceed? Then we're paying.
We can't exceed that. I think they've agreed that would be the maximum.
Yeah, we, regardless. But yes, and that was a negotiation. We actually, they started at one point two million. And it was negotiated down to that eight hundred and ninety-three figure, right, whatever the bottom line was there. I forgot. But yeah, we, and that's part of that's Melissa Hawk, man. I'm telling you, she's awesome, y'all. I can say enough good things about her, about helping us negotiate that down. I really can't. Eight hundred ninety-four thousand. Yeah, from one point two million. So kudos to our, our staff for that.
I guess if there is an advantage to eight hundred ninety-four thousand dollar negotiated maximum, it is that that it couldn't go above eight hundred ninety-four thousand dollars. Regardless if they had to go out and bring in the seventy-five dollar hour nurses for the whole last quarter, once they got to that point, they're going to have to eat it. I mean, that's the advantage of that. Disadvantage obviously is that, you know, you got a hundred and seventy-four thousand dollar difference between natural contract price. And a maximum could be price. And the concern with that right there, and Greg and I have talked about this a little bit, is, you know. You know. You don't want to be the only one there doing that. And I know it's systemic across, all across the nation and stuff like that. And hopefully. Y'all would, if the board approves this maximum dollar amount, y'all would hold their feet to the fire and have them show you some kind of documentation that they're doing this.
This man right here, I promise you will do that. He's, he's in the process actually of reviewing those quarter one and quarter two statements. He's very thorough, and I'm glad to have him on staff too to look.
Even if that requires making a phone call to some of your comrades.
Absolutely.
Find out, make sure that.
Whatever it takes.
They're doing the same thing to them that they're doing to us.
Absolutely.
You said Cherokee, Lumpkin, and Forsyth have this same company?
Actually, there's forty-two sheriff's offices that have this same.
Well, that'd be easy to find out.
So, you know, with that little bit of due diligence like that, I think that'll make us and the citizens feel a little bit better.
All of us, yes.
Y'all got any more questions for Greg? Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Next up, we have presentation, Georgia Forest Commission Volunteer Fire Assistants. Dave's gonna start out that right there.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. Good afternoon to you. Each year, the Georgia Forestry Commission offers a national fire protection and volunteer fire associations grant to qualified fire departments. In the, in the state of Georgia. Dawson County has applied for the, has applied for and received this grant over the last several years. The grant money can be used to purchase firefighting equipment for departments that protect rural communities. So the GFC will begin accepting requests for the grant, which allows purchases from the option listed below. And with that option list is there's a, a list of equipment that that can be purchased with that money. It's a ten thousand dollar grant with a five thousand dollar match. So obviously, it's a fifty fifty match on that. And again, this is something that we've done, I think, routinely for years. obviously it's a fifty-fifty match on that. Uh, and again, this is something that we've done, I think routinely for years. So we're asking uh, tonight for the uh, uh, commission to consider this uh, this grant application due on uh, by November the thirtieth.
In that letter, it, it says, please share the following information with fire departments serving communities with populations of less than ten thousand. That, that's not us.
Right.
Oh, oh. Okay, duh, right over my head.
Yeah, and thinking back, it's been on there every single time. And uh, and it, and it does go back to what Chief Dooley is saying is that, you know, there are a lot of fire departments out there in county, especially volunteer fire departments that have five chiefs and, and all in the same county. Cause each one of them is individual. Like, we used to be that way years ago. When county was that way years ago, when we had Kylo Fire Department, Liberty Fire Department, Dawsonville Fire Department, they all had their own chiefs. They all did their own thing, raised their own money. So, and I think it was eighty-five when we actually went all in together in Dawson County in the fire department. So you're gonna go there now with introductions?
I'm sorry?
You're gonna go with the introduction now?
No, sir, I was gonna wait.
You're gonna wait, no, later, alright, that'll work.
But this is fifty-fifty match, you said?
Yes, ma'am.
Ten thousand.
Yeah, it'd be five thousand dollars.
And this is what, we'd only put this in our budget, right?
Yeah.
Any other questions for Dave? Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, let's move on down to presentation appointment for the Board of Elections and Registration, Chief Registrar Glenda Ferguson. Miss Glenda.
Good afternoon. Um, basically, I'm here to request from the Board of Commissioners to certify the fifth member of the board. We recently um, restructured the board through legislation to um, remove the chief registrar as the chairperson of the board and which would allow a greater pool of um, educated maybe in, in, I shouldn't say educated, that's not a good term, but experienced personnel in the election field uh, that could work outside the county. Whereas chief registrar, you are uh, only allowed to live in the county, you know, itself to serve as a chief registrar. So we um, came together as a board and decided that would be a better a better thing for the county to have that option and that the board would become not only the board of elections, but in registration, but also the chief registrar as a combined unit. And so that we are now requesting that fifth member of the board to be appointed or certified by the Board of Commissioners as that's in the letter and the legislation and uh, bylaws have been updated to reflect that. So um, I come before you to ask that that person be certified. Paul McCampsky is who the board is recommending. He's been a poll worker and uh, for every election since two thousand twenty and is uh, very much interested in serving.
Is he here?
He's not here, no, sorry.
It's okay. Questions for Ms. Glenda?
Does he have any Teflon on his skin?
Yes.
He's gonna need some. Going after bounce off.
That was one of the requirements.
Yeah, because y'all, your office is just under the gun.
He does traffic control a lot, so it's good.
Any other questions for Ms. Glenda? This just gets us in line with what they proved at the legislature.
Thank you.
So how, how, how many peoples your board, five?
It's a five-member board. I will come off as the chair.
Okay.
And um, and he will, he won't become the chair. They'll choose their own um,
Chairperson?
Yeah, at that, after we get it. I'm sorry?
You'll still be our chief registrar.
Yeah, we'll still, I'll still be there still as director and election supervisor and, yeah. So they'll be the chief registrar. I'll be the deputy registrar, so to speak. Yeah.
Other questions? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Next up, we have presentation of IFB number four oh two dash twenty-two Thompson Creek Park Realignment, other words Director Jeff Hahn. I think David's gonna help you with that as well.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. This is the Thompson Creek Park Road realignment that we're talking about and this looks right. Okay, a little background on this. Uh, in June twenty ninth, uh, two thousand nineteen, the Board of Commissioners approved a two hundred and forty unit apartment development and associated amenities to be located near the corner of Dawson Forest Road and Highway fifty-three. A G dot roundabout project will be constructed to allow flow of traffic from Dawson Forest Road, Highway fifty-three and Thompson Creek Park Road. Prior to this construction, Thompson Creek Park Road will need to be realigned to allow for better flow of traffic in and out of the roundabout. Thankfully for the county, this con, this contract was not needed. Okay. Bid was uh, uh, done according to policy and two bids were received. Some of the scope of the services are as follows, traffic control, cleaning and grubbing, erosion control, storm sewer, grading, excavating, concrete work and asphalt paving. Location of the site is Dawson Forest Road, Highway fifty-three and Thompson Creek Park Road. This slide shows a new road in red. The current Thompson Creek Park Road will be removed. Here you see the design for the new road that shows how the roundabout will be connected when completed. Ottawa Water and Sewer will be responsible for the relocation of the water main. Contractor will be responsible for, for compact, compaction testing. Uh, there will be uh, removal of between ten inches to twelve inches of concrete under the pavement on the current Thompson Creek Park Road. The contractor will coordinate with G dot regarding regarding the, the curbing, paving and idling widening required for temporary tie-in to the area where the roundabout will be installed by G dot. All new curb and gutter will be twenty-four inches. Since this is a linear project with more than one acre of disturbance, stormwater monitoring will be required by the contractor. Okay, um, this slide shows, shows the pricing. Uh, JG Leon Enterprises Incorporated was the lowest, most reasonable bidder at fifty-five or five hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine and twenty cents. Um, vetting of this bidder was completed through some of their references and, and G dot. Uh, staff recommend, recommendation, staff respectfully requests the board accept bids received determined by the funds to be utilized and approve the contract to JG Leon Enterprises Incorporated in an amount of five hundred and fifty-six thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and twenty cents. Thank you for your time. Questions?
Questions for Jeff? David, I think you had something to add?
Yes, sir. Prior to this meeting, we had received the phone uh, call from G dot to uh, have a uh, Zoom meeting. During that Zoom meeting, the staff learned that, that G dot has altered the scope of work that will affect this uh, project. That scope of work change was that G dot was to construct the roundabout and the county was going to realign and construct uh, Thompson Road. Um, what we learned was is that there had been some circumstances that had come up with G dot now that they would, they want to put the, have the county to go ahead and construct both projects. So by doing so, we are now in a position to uh, change the scope to uh, include the roundabout as well as the realignment responsibility that we have. So uh, what G dot has proposed on that is that the funding they were going to utilize before was what they referred to as a safety uh, fund. And that safety fund uh, has a limit on it of about two hundred thousand dollars. And it's my understanding that their preliminary cost estimates and what we've seen to support that was that it had exceeded that in, in over three hundred and fifty thousand dollars as far as what their portion was going to be. So their recommendation for this funding revenue source would be to go back and ask for additional uh, L-MIG money, which is a local maintenance improvement grant money that we typically get on an annual basis. Um, and ask for that money to be able to cover uh, the cost of that. Where the burden comes in on the county is that we end up having to, to advertise it, which means to reject what we have. Go ahead and re-advertise the uh, uh, project to be inclusive of both projects and then monitor and, and uh, control the, the construction of the project. Uh, as, as uh, Mr. Hahn mentioned, there was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that was given by the apartment complex uh, when they built to be contributed towards this uh, improvement. County had identified two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of SLOX six. And since that time, uh, uh, out of a rezoning for another parcel across the street has also dedicated two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There's a hundred and twenty-five thousand on each rezoning. So that was a total of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Our bid came in sixty thousand above the, the two fifty. So it was at five sixty as Mr. Hahn mentioned. Uh, and then of course we have the other uh, two fifty. And then if we get, and what I've asked for is to receive a five hundred thousand dollar um, addition to the L-MIG that we will receive this year. So it will be added to that, that uh, L-MIG money um, to be spent on the roundabout here. Uh, any overages that are occurred during the construction, should they have unforeseen conditions? Uh, soil contamination or anything like that that may come about, we would be responsible for any overages uh, at that point. We've done no testing. Uh, G dot has done the design. G dot has also um, uh, done their permitting portion of it. Uh, what their contribution would be is, is the quick response funds of the two hundred plus the, the additional five hundred. Any amount awarded through the additional L-MIG request uh, would not afflict, as I said, the uh, L-MIG that we currently get and possible maintenance in-house forces by the district. So uh, in this particular case, the board has the option of either going ahead and moving forward on just the Thompson Road improvement or rejecting the bid and then directing staff to go ahead and, and go back out for an all-inclusive project bid. Answer any questions?
Questions for Jeff or Dave?
Since they did the design, are they, can we get that designed from them? So we don't have to do that over again?
I already have it.
Yes, sir. We've got, we've got the realignment already done. We got the, we've got the design for the realignment. We did that.
That's correct.
I have the design for the roundabout.
That's correct.
From them. Did they, any testing? Did they do any testing before they did their design?
I don't know for certain whether they
Maybe we can get that also.
I, I would certainly think that G dot would have looked at it.
I know they did some surveys and stuff.
I had a conference call with them and Gooch and Wade, though they, and they're willing to give us any of that preliminary data that they've already come up with. I mean, this is a, a path forward that talking to Steve, it allows us to be more in control. And um, so I think they would, they, they want it done too. I mean, they, they don't deny they want the intersection improved. So it's just a change in which pot it goes out of essentially.
You know, I also think if they had, uh, it's important to note that uh, from the county's perspective, we've done everything that we're supposed to do. Lands, land, because you know, there was a land swap done there to realign. So technically we would be on, if we just did the improvement to Thompson Road, we would end up being on, you know, the private property. So uh, we've already acquired the lands. We've already gotten the design. We've already, you know, expended funds on that. So really the thing to do at this point would be to get with them and get what they have and, and go ahead and move forward on, on a new design.
Comprehensive.
We can get economies of scale by bidding those things out together. So they're already mobilized and.
That's correct. What kind of timeframe do you think we'd look at? I know this thing's been on the burner for, for years.
And, and a lot of that was because of the preliminary work that had to be done uh, with, with the land deal and the, and, and then the design and all that. Now we've got everything ready to go. Like I said, we've already bid it out. So uh, a portion of it. So I don't anticipate it. You know, I say that and I'll end up eating my words, but you know, probably with you know, yes, sir. Maybe before that.
And also with the uh, L-MIG proposal that they made that we asked for more L-MIG money. We all, in that they weren't requiring us to do the match we normally
That's correct. That's correct. No match.
Okay.
Put it towards paid the projects.
Any other questions for Jeff or David? All right. So we'll take that up and then let's see, did we have that on the?
Can we move it?
Yeah, let's move it. Let's move it to the voting session if it's not already. Yeah.
That'd be great. Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have presentation of RFP four oh nine dash two two, design bill for three fields. Parking Recreation, Parking Recreation Director Matt Payne. Matt.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Commissioners, for allowing me to come and talk to you about the Recreation Department. Again, it's always fun to come and talk to us. And if, I've noticed a trend, by the way. All of these um, PowerPoints look the same. And I think that's because Melissa Hawk does an unbelievable job for our county. Not to say that she does everybody's job for them, but she does a pretty good job. Um, yes, we are uh, excited to be coming back to you uh, to discuss the, the, the three fields that we're going to be putting some artificial turf on. Two of the fields, this artificial turf, one is going to be the Mondo Field, the Special Needs Field at Rock Creek Park. So um, just a little background, uh, if you, as you will remember, the board approved uh, two point five million to turf the multi, the multipurpose field and football fields at Veterans Park and to install the ADA compliant rubber field at um, Rock Creek Park. This two point five million was out of impact fees and uh, was approved recently. And again, of uh, uh, according to policy, Ms. Hawk did a fantastic job as always of making sure we dotted all of our i's and crossed all of our t's. Did it exactly how we're supposed to do it and made sure it was done according to everything that we're supposed to be doing. Now, the scope of work for the fields, um, this is in the, some of the scope of the work for all the fields is in the preliminary design, the detailed schematic design and the final, uh, final design phases. Lastly, the construction services phase. So basically, uh, each of these particular companies were in charge of doing their own designs. They're going to come in and do everything. It's a turnkey operation. The fields at uh, at Veterans Park will be very equivalent to what we did at Rock Creek. If you've been up to Rock Creek um, and saw the, the new soccer fields there. I remember Ms. Fawcett did a great job of kicking our first kick for us at those soccer fields.
I missed it. Boy, I did a good job.
We, we have just
Memorable.
We have already exploded on those soccer fields. They are fantastic. So they're going to be very similar to what we have there. The football field at Veterans will already be painted for football a, as a permanent um, permanent painting or a permanent as part of the turf, the field, uh, the multipurpose field, the big uh, field across from the pavilion will be just a big green spa, big green area. Uh, that way we can put kind of what we want to on it. Looking at it, we can probably put an entire uh, little ones baseball, the three, four-year-old baseball on that field and play them all in one Saturday, all at the same time. So we can do some special stuff when it's going to be left just green. And then of course, the field over at um, Rock Creek is going to be our ADA compliant field. It's going to be wheelchair accessible. It's going to be at the whole works. And we're really going to dress this one up and have a great time with it. Um, let's go over to the map this one. Uh, okay. So this is the actual showing of the uh, this is the field at Rock Creek that's going to be done. This is one of our, our T-ball fields that, well, actually this is the field over at Veterans, the multipurpose field. This, this particular slide showing that. Um, this one, this is the T-ball field at Rock Creek Park that is going to get done. It's the one closest to the playground right there at the entrance. We're going to really dress it up and it's going to be the first thing really that you see when you pull into that entrance at Rock Creek. Okay, so we did receive, according to our policy, we did receive some uh, some of the, the pricing for the fields. This is to see, this will be the pricing for we received three different quotes on the fields at uh, on, on the multiple, excuse me, the ADA field at Rock Creek Park. We did receive, I'm sorry, two quotes on that one. One was uh, Sprint Turf, one was Ram. Ram is the company that I have used before to do the floors inside the gym. Uh, when we were, we, we did those fields, very confident in their work. Ram and uh, Sprint Turf was those. And then the, the uh, let me just go through some of these. A lot of these are going to be questions that we can ask a little bit. And then the other one, we received three quotes for the the fields at Veterans Park as well. And uh, I think that toes um, were one of the companies that we did use before Sprint Turf. That was one of them and Precision was one of them. And um, let me, Paris can stretch. Yes. Okay, so our staff recommendation, let me back up on the um, the Precision Turf. That is a company that I have not used before. So I want to be very clear that um, we didn't just jump into this lightly. I'm, I I'm, I uh I went around, looked at a lot of the projects that they've done before. They've done a lot of projects with Charles Black and Associates, which is a very highly respected group. I went and looked at their individual work that they've done. Um Steel was kind of very nervous about them, so I called a meeting with them, and they met me at Veterans Park, and we walked every square inch. We talked about every detail that could possibly come into play, and uh I walked away from that being, feeling very, very comfortable. And of course, as I mentioned, I have dealt with Ram before Ram Flooring uh for the Mondo Field at 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 Rock Creek Park. They're extremely comfortable with those as well. So to that, staff rightly respectfully request that the board accept the offers received in the word the contract to Precision Turf for the fields at Veterans Memorial Park in the amount of one million, four hundred and thirty-eight thousand and forty dollars uh with a hundred dollars in a county contingency and then award a contract to Ram Enterprises for the fields at Rock Creek, for the field at Rock Creek Park in the amount of six hundred ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine dollars with two hundred and sixty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-one in county contingency. These would be two different contracts, of course. And with that, I will be happy to uh answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for Matt?
Is the contingency money in addition to the figure you gave, or is it included in?
Well, if, it, all of that would add up to that two point five million that you approved.
Okay.
For this project, and um Melissa, again, I I keep singing her praises. She does such a wonderful job of negotiating these prices down. She left us with quite a bit money in contingency. If we don't have to go into that money, then of course, that's money that we save our taxpayers.
Yes, the contingency would be used, I guess, if we had to have some type of a contract amendment.
Right, unsuitable soils, if we find some kind of spring.
Plan in the time.
Yeah, hopefully, we won't get into that, and I don't think we will at Veterans. It's it's obviously a higher elevation. And that's what we, if you'll recall, we ran into at Rock Creek Park because we ran into some swampland.
Yes.
And we had to add a little money to it, but I don't think we're going to run into that at at Veterans Park. I think we're going to be in good shape.
Other questions?
Have you talked to anybody that has used precision for?
Yes, ma'am, I've I've checked on all their references. I came away from it feeling extremely comfortable.
Okay, nice.
Yeah. So to that, I would respectfully, I know this is a lot to digest and lots to look over, just in the essence of time, especially for the ADA field and try to get it done um by the end of the year, hopefully, I would respect, respectfully ask if we can move this to the agenda tonight. Um and if uh if we would, if you could agree to do that, that would really put us ahead of the curve. I know it's a lot to digest, but if you'd like to consider that, I sure would appreciate that.
Good with that?
Yes, I am.
Uh, we'll move that to the voting session then.
It sounds like it's been thoroughly vetted.
We've, we've had a lot of fun working on it. Thank you, thank you.
Uh next up, we have a presentation of an amendment to an intergovernmental agreement between the City of Dawsonville and Dawson County concerning the trail infrastructure for pedestrian access between Main Street Park and the library. David?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Uh Commissioners, you may recall back in uh on uh October of uh the seventh of twenty twenty-one, we discussed uh Main Street Park, and that is connecting from the park to Fire Station One and the library. This would allow for both the SO's office and and our uh fire department uh to be able to access that park without having to get in vehicles and drive around uh to the park in case they had an emergency situation. It also allowed for access from the s, from the library to be able to to access that park. Uh you you may recall, there's a part of the uh park there that has more of a educational uh area where um people, you know, classes, small um uh elementary-type school classes can go over and learn about plants and and that type of thing. Uh one of the requests that the county had at the time was that they construct a bridge, and uh that was a free standing bridge going, you know, across the kind of the creek area there, if you will. Um, since that time, the the city has met with EPD and APD has determined that that the runoff that comes through there in that creek area would not really warrant that extensive of a structure. So uh they contacted me to talk about maybe doing an earthened type uh of structure that would have basically a culber pipe and it would be, you know, uh under, under earth. Um, A A P D has proved that. Uh they have gotten with their attorneys and the city council has gone ahead and signed off on that. So I was bringing it uh forward to you all to consider going ahead and and uh amending that uh agreement, uh that inter uh governmental agreement. If we can, if possible, uh the city would like to have us vote on that this evening, and the reason for that is they're trying to get it done before the Moonshine Festival. That would allow access with all the, you know, folks they're anticipating going to be there, that if there is an emergency, this is already complete and we have direct access. So if at all possible, the consideration would be greatly appreciated.
And our council's seen that?
Yes, we have, and um, yes, we've approved it and very simple modifications have existed.
Questions for Dave?
Who's going to do the inspection on it?
Uh and got, I mean, I would assume that the the city was going to do it, but I mean, if if that's a requirement of the board and like stipulate to that, we certainly will, will be a part of that inspection.
I want to make sure it's ADA compliant and that uh, I mean, you know, we we require one type of pipe to go in.
That's correct.
And they might require another type of pipe and.
Well, I do the agreement, the city's responsible for the bridge and the piping, and so, you know, I tend to think we may want to leave it that way. Um.
But, but we're responsible for ADA's for the city and the county.
Your mic's off.
Okay, well, if you're saying we, you feel that we need to be involved.
We, we've, well, we as the emergency services
Mm-hmm.
are the uh in charge of ADA for the whole county and the city.
Emergency services respond whether it was in the county or.
I'm just talking about ADA compliant.
Right, right.
And so I'm just saying, I think we need to be one.
Those things were addressed in the first bridge uh and and like I said, we could certainly be a part of that inspection process.
Okay, that is something I honestly had not.
Required.
I I don't think the contract addresses that specifically because the burden's placed on the on the city. And I think the city, even though they don't have to be responsible for overseeing the ADA compliance, they have an obligation under the law to be ADA compliant, so feel like it should be accomplished with it being their burden. But if you want us to have a role in that um in some.
We're the ADA coordinator for the county and the city, and something's found. I mean, the, there's a group out of Gainesville that checks.
Mm-hmm.
And it's so lovely county before, and they check this county. And they check surrounding counties, so I don't want to put something up and there comes the Moonshine Festival and we're found not a comply.
Okay, so the agreement's been approved by the city at this point, so are you suggesting you want to modify the agreement so that we have a right of inspection and approval on the bridge? If, I mean, we can do that.
Modify, but I think we need to be involved in the inspection of it.
Okay.
I mean, it's coming off of, you know, the the library, which we're, it's a county library and it's not the city library.
Well, it, and I don't know that the city would object to us participating because it puts us in the mess with them if anything happens, but um I'm sure they'd be thrilled for us to participate, but the agreement per se does not give us that necessarily that right, so I guess that would be the question, if the board feels like you want to modify the agreement, or if you'd like me just to speak with council and see if there's going to be a problem and just if there's general understanding, if you're comfortable with that, um we can do it either way.
Yeah, I'd be comfortable with that. I mean, we've already got, we've got a time limit on it.
I know.
I just don't want to be held responsible for something, the county held responsible for something we didn't oversee.
We're good with, uh, moving that forward? Vote up?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. All right, next up, we have presentation of proposed twenty twenty-three budget. I'm going to go down here. For that, to the back of the. I don't think so. All right.
I can't believe this.
Or let me start out by thanking you for all of your participation in the budget process. You've sat through all the meetings and with our department heads and elected officials to hear all the concerns and needs of our, of the staff and elected officials and their staff. So appreciate the time that you took to put into that. All right. Our budget goals was to prepare a realistic revenue-based budget. Our budget conforms to the reduced mileage rate from seven point six two five to seven point two two five. Our goal was to provide the same or improved level of funding for all departments, thus improving the level of service that they can provide to our citizens. Provide all departments and agencies the opportunity to present their requests to the full board during the public hearings, which they were allowed to do. Okay? So some of the budget challenges, we've seen uh increased personnel costs from pay raises granted during the last three years. We're seeing increasing operational needs of multiple departments. And we got to anticipate any foreseeable changes in revenue sources. As you know, the economy is kind of up and down, so we have to look at that, and then we want to also, while we're doing that, try to maintain a strong fund balance uh in case there are any uh unforeseen changes. Wanted to show you this particular slide here. Uh starts in two thousand nineteen, and you'll see the cost for personnel uh at that particular time was nineteen thousand, five hundred and forty-seven, not, yeah, I'm forty, nineteen million, five hundred and thirty-seven thousand.
We wish it were.
Six hundred and fifty-seven dollars, and now down in twenty twenty-three uh with what I'm going to be proposing to you here in a few minutes, that is now going to be twenty-eight million, nine hundred and thirty-one thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight. And you can see the difference in the increases.
Mm-hmm.
So this board, over the years, has done an extremely good job of trying to take care of our staff, trying to maintain a quality staff and try to be competitive at the same time uh with everyone who would like to have our staff. So in this, these numbers include salary and benefits, which are all part of of personnel cost. The general fund, which you realize and know is our main operating uh fund for the county, all property tax received by the county government provides revenue, the general fund, and this pro, proposed budget, property tax provides eighty, thirty-eight point twenty-six percent of revenue uh for the general fund, and the local option sales tax provides twenty-eight point one six percent of the revenue uh for the general fund. Well, where did we start from? We started from general fund operating requests totaled thirty-five million, forty-three thousand, four hundred and ten dollars. We had over nine point six million dollars in capital requests to be funded in twenty twenty-three, and we had over two point seven million dollars in new personnel and salary change requests that you saw throughout that process. And FY twenty-two, our original budget was thirty-two million, four hundred and eighty-six thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. Through some of the changes we made in personnel costs and different things that we've added to that budget. By amending that budget throughout the year, we're currently at thirty-five million, one hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollars. Some general fund revenue changes in twenty twenty-one, the county received word it would receive the five million dollars from the federal government as part of the American Rescue Plan Act, the ARPA money. The board made the decision to use these funds to offset the cost of pay increases for first responders. If you remember, we did some three dollar an hour increases for the sheriff's departments and two dollar an hour uh increases for EMS paramedics that rode the med unit and a fifteen percent increase across the board for those folks uh back at that time. In this proposed budget, those funds are programmed to help cover salary increases provided to those first responders, including the sheriff's officers, emergency service and public works. Those costs total over one point six million for two thousand and twenty-three and are budgeted in a special revenue fund number two thirty. This funding will help cover these costs for the next two years. You remember when we voted to that, we divided that out over a three-year period. This proposed budget does include the use of fund balance reserves of two million uh ninety-eight thousand, four hundred and ninety-five dollars or five point six three percent of the revenue. And as you saw, when we had the audit report, we had a substantially nice uh fund balance. Uh we do have some fund balance that we are current, that that we have funded in the twenty twenty-two budget, but so far, we feel like we may not have to use any of that or very little of that that we funded in twenty twenty-two. So if we did use everything and then uh we had to use all of this in the proposed twenty-three budget, we would still be at that little bit above that fifteen percent limit that uh we want to stay at, and our ordinance says fifteen to twenty-five percent, but we would still be a little bit above that. So we are not making any kind of recommendation to go below that. This is kind of an explanation of the ARPA funds for you to look at. As you saw, the total was five million, seventy-one thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars. You see the F twenty-one actual, the twenty-two budget, and as you remember, we uh approved some of that for the COVID P D O, so that people, when they had come down with COVID, working hard for our citizens, then we covered their salary through that uh ARPA funds. The budget for FY twenty twenty-three and then the proposal of a hundred thousand dollars uh in case we still have to deal with uh COVID, and we still are dealing with that as we go forward. And then that would leave in the twenty twenty-four budget, six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, six hundred and sixty-seven dollars. Then after that, uh we will have to budget to pick up the money that has been approved for pay raises uh going forward after that. Here are the proposed general fund revenues, and I won't read each and every one of those to you. Uh you'll see the revenue with the use of fund balance for twenty twenty-three, the thirty-seven million, two hundred and ninety-two thousand, six hundred and twenty-one. And if you'll see the amended budget right beside it, FY twenty twenty-two, thirty-five million, one hundred and eighteen, three ninety-five. And fourteen point seven nine percent is a change from the original twenty twenty-two budget, not the amended twenty twenty-two budget. And the change from the original budget of four million, eight hundred and five thousand, but if you look at what we've amended already, you're looking at a little over two million dollar change. Our revenue sources, this chart gives you uh the percentages of the pie chart of where that revenue comes from. Here are your proposed general fund expenditures by function. General Government, Judicial, Public Safety Sheriff, Public Safety, Public Works, Health and Welfare, Recreation and Culture, Housing and Development, and then transfer out to other funds uh like we transfer money out to E nine one one, because we do have a E nine one one account that we get money off the phone charges, and so this is a, like you said, a change from the original budget uh of fourteen point seven nine percent. Those, these are the departments that are part of general government. And you'll see that the proposed budget for each one of those departments. And the total general government is seven million, six hundred and sixty-nine thousand, one hundred and seventy-two. That's a change of fifteen point three nine percent from the original twenty twenty-two budgets. This is the judicial, which includes Superior Court, the clerk of court, the district attorney, the magistrate court, probate court, juvenile court, public defender's office and treatment court. You see there, the total judicial is four million, four hundred and forty thousand, one hundred and eighty-four. Next up is public safety. Then public safety, we have the marshal's office, fire, fire marshal and prevention, EMS coroner, EMA and the Humane Society. And that total public safety budget is seven million, one hundred and fifty-nine thousand, two hundred and thirty-seven. This is the sheriff's budget. Proposed, the sheriff's office contains the sheriff, the sheriff canine, the sheriff jail, the sheriff school, traffic management, sheriff school resource officers, the donation account, you'll see that's blank, that's not added into the budget until the donations actually come in, and you'll see that throughout uh any of the departments that have donations, you will not see a dollar amount in that figure at the current. That's just added to the budget when donations are brought in. Then court services and then special event officers. Next up, public works. Within that, you have the administration, the road department and keep Dawson County beauty. And that is a two, two million, one hundred and seventy-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Total. Health and welfare includes the health department, the Good Shepherd Clinic, Evita, CASA, DFAX, No One Alone, Indisent Welfare, Senior Center, Senior Services, Donation Account, as you see is blank, but will uh be added in as things come in. And then Medicare Silver Sneakers. Total of three hundred and eighty-one thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Recreation and Culture, if your park, park donation account, your park women's club, the park pool, War Hill Park, and then the library. Total of one million nine thirty-two nine eighty-six. Housing and Development includes the county extension, planning and development, and the Development Authority. A total of one million three hundred and sixty-three thousand eight hundred and sixty-nine. And other financing uses, those are the transfer outs, we'll transfer out to family connection, transfer out to grants, transfer out to capital, transfer out to the solid waste fund, transfer out to fleet, transfer out to E nine one one, and then uh transfer out to D car G I S, uh one million nine hundred thousand seven oh three. This pie chart gives you the expenditure allocations. What percentage of each one of those? Some of the proposed budget highlights uh as we talked about uh numerous occasions of trying to go to a uh merit-based uh pay increase system. I added one million dollars in the contingency for that. Uh, and you had already uh uh approved the million dollars uh in September, a five percent increase. So basically, majority of this budget increase that you're seeing is going to be for the pay increase of five percent that you've already approved. And then the million dollar contingency to get started on the uh merit-based system pay uh if you so approve this budget request. And one point six million of personnel costs for first responders, that was moved from the general fund to special ARPA funds, and that's that money we receive from the federal government. And many of the capital requests posed to be funded out of splash six remaining funds, you know, we, we voted on that, I think it was last year, though some of those projects still aren't done, we're still working on those and that money has already been allocated by you, a lot of those uh projects. And then three hundred and forty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-three dollars budgeted for debt service. We still have debt that we have to pay. And so uh that's for that. And then G I S has been moved from a separate fund and budgeted now in the general fund. Let's talk a little bit about personnel. I'm not really proposing any uh new positions at this time based on the fact that we're trying, except for what you see here, based on the fact that we're trying to maintain a quality staff that we already have. I will tell you that we have at this particular day, twenty-seven vacant full-time positions that we've not been able to fill. And so I think it's imperative that we continue to work to fill those. Uh, what you see here is three part-time firefighter paramount positions and three part-time firefighter E M positions that will be changed to full-time. And we will accomplish this with the elimination of the part-time positions. And this will be a cost neutral to the budget. This won't cost the budget any money. But I think it's imperative that we uh maintain the current staff that we have. They do a good job. I think this board has proven to them that they consider them to be a valuable asset. And, and, and if you approve uh this proposed budget, you will be showing them that once again in this merit-based pay of a million dollars that I have put in this budget. Uh, what I would propose to the board is this, is that there are some departments that obviously uh are in need of more help. Uh, I would propose that after the first quarter, if you decide to approve this budget, that after the first quarter, we see where we stand financially in twenty twenty-three. And then we go back and we look at some of the positions that you may decide as a high priority that, you know, that we need to fill. But I think right now, looking at where we stand with the twenty-seven full-time vacant positions, we actually have, if you count everything, part-time, seasonal and all that, we have a hundred vacant positions. But twenty-seven full-time, which are critical. And that goes, goes across the gamut of many of our departments. The capital projects fund. We will be able to uh expend, and we'll show that in just a minute, uh money in splash seven. We have reached uh the level two numbers that we had to get to as well as our contract that we had with the city, we've been able to do that. So in twenty twenty-three, we will have revenue coming from splash seven that we can spend on capital projects. And I'll show you that list in just a minute. Uh, the only thing that, and then we also have impact fees that allow us to do uh some of these projects as well. The only thing that I couldn't find a way to fund through impact fees or capital was a seventeen thousand dollar lawnmower for the park. So I am recommending that we buy them that other lawnmower that they need. If you remember, they had two that was going bad and one of them had got so bad that they went in and bought one anyway uh with some funds that they already had. And so they still need the other one. So I'm making that recommendation to you. Splash six collections ended June the thirtieth of twenty twenty-one. Four million dollars budgeted used for projects as needed. These projects will follow the guidelines set by that resolution that was approved with splash six. So those projects that you've already seen, that you approved, uh I believe it was in last year's budget when we looked at that and what's been approved since then. Those projects will continue. Splash seven collections began uh July first, two thousand twenty-one. Eleven million six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars in sales tax revenue budgeted to be received in two thousand twenty-three. So sales tax as uh has done well, continues to do well. Here is a proposal that I will make to you in reference to uh spending in uh twenty twenty-three. Level two projects is going to be a multi-year deal, as we well know, four million dollars projected. The project would be projected to be completed in FY twenty-four. And so start out with four million dollars, then obviously the remaining money in twenty twenty-four that was voted for uh in splash seven. You see a list of other uh projects that could be uh done with splash seven uh in twenty twenty-three as well. That's a total of eleven million six hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Grant transfers uh in the grant category, we expect to receive two million two hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, two hundred and thirteen four hundred and twenty dollars in grants at a cost of seven hundred and fifty thousand, seven fifty-seven thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars, almost three to one. Uh, what we want to see continue is, as we've said many times, uh grant money is out there. We need to be looking for it and trying to get it for projects that we're going to have to pay for anyway. And so if we can get it for a third of the cost, uh because that grant money is your money anyway. That, that grant money is taxpayer money that's paid by the citizens of this county. And as much of it as we can get back, the better off we are. Now, primarily, we've been talking about the general fund. Uh, these are all the funds uh proposed budget for two thousand twenty-three. And you'll see that the general fund's at the very top of that. And then a whole list of other funds uh that go through the camp. And the amount budgeted uh for each one of those. And the total of all funds down at the bottom of sixty-one million three hundred and ninety-two thousand two hundred and fifty-seven. And that's a decrease from all funds of what was budgeted in twenty twenty-two. We will have three uh public budget hearings. These are the times uh for those. Uh, give our, give the general public an opportunity uh to speak as well as you as a board, an opportunity to look through this proposal, see what kind of changes you would propose or want to make uh add to or take away. So at the November third, twenty twenty-two voting session, the board will consider, and then you desire to, at that time, you may adopt a FY twenty twenty-three budget. In closing, I want to thank all the elected officials, the department heads and their staff and their assistants uh with the budget process. Once again, thank all of you for your assistance in the budget process. And you're not done. You have to keep looking at. And special thanks to Vicky and Natalie and her staff because it would not be possible without their expertise. And so special thanks to them for all that they do and have done and will continue to do. If you have any questions at this particular time, I will try to answer those for you. Alright.
I can't digest that that quickly. That's right.
Alright, we'll move on. The county manager report, Dave.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, uh, our most recent shore sweep was held on Saturday, September the twenty-fourth at War Hill Park. Various county departments were involved, including public works, facilities and parks and recreation. Twenty-four point two five tons of debris consisting of uh typical trash to large sections of docks and other types of refuse was collected and hauled off to the landfill. A thank you was received from this year's shore sweep coordinator, Mr. Kirby Shimon, and it reads, "Thank you for your entire team's support of shore sweep at War Hill Park. Everyone was amazing and it simply could not have happened without the help we get from Dawson County." Um, in my presentation earlier, we, we spoke of the letter that needed to go to uh G dot for a request of the five hundred thousand uh dollars for additional L M I G. I'd, I'd asked the board to uh consider uh that request. And if they so please, go ahead and authorize the chairman to sign that letter this evening so that we can move forward on doing the necessary uh.
Yeah, we're moving that.
Yes.
Oh, and as you know, we are in legal service contracts with Gerard and Davis. And the current term expires on December the thirty-first, twenty twenty-two. So we need to renew that contract if you desire. And then I'll hand over to the chairman for his comment.
We do have, I mean, as you know, when we uh did the contract with Gerard and Davis, we did a la, it's a five-year contract and it could roll over year to year. And so I think we're on year two or three, one in there. So basically, Melissa just wants us to, she likes for everything to be renewed every year. So I'd like for the board to add that to the voting session as well for the renewal of the county attorney conference.
Any changes?
No.
That's the same.
Well, this is the first I'm hearing about it. So, um, so I, I would like to discuss with you, um, the term, the rate term. Just because the increase in costs and personnel costs and, but I thought that was going to be a January issue. It expires December thirty-first, right?
It does. So. There's. I think there was some room in the contract for some kind of increases.
I think there may be two, and I did not know it was going to be brought up tonight. So
We can hold off on that.
We could hold it. And I would love to share with you some data.
We got time.
Okay, thank you so much. And thank you for being proactive with that. I do appreciate it.
Alright. Dave, go ahead.
Yes, sir. Um, yes, sir. I'd like to make an introduction. I'd, I'd like to take a moment and then, and introduce our new emergency services director, Chief Troy Leest. Chief Leest is uh has a long career spanning over twenty-eight years in California. Chief Leest has worked his way from firefighter one to division chief. He has completed higher education classes, including but not limited to fire behavior, fire chemistry and suppression tactic strategy, fire management, fire investigations, emergency medical care, hazardous materials, all supported by general education. His experience and specialized training will provide a vital dimension to our more rural areas that combined with his solid proven leadership uh record in team building will help take our emergency services department to the next level. His nearly three-decade career has been exclusively dedicated to EMS, supported by his widespread list of accomplishments. He has dedicated his professional career and life to serving others, and we are excited to have him join our team. Please join me in welcoming Chief Lees. If Chief Lees would like to introduce himself to you.
Well, I'd say, uh, I never thought I'd be in front of elected officials again after it was almost thirty years. And uh I retired uh August of twenty-one and moved out here. Love it. Couldn't wait to get out of California. Love Georgia. And um I got bored and I, I missed public service. I missed helping the communities. I missed being involved in, in everything. And my wife started talking to me about, no, maybe you should start looking around and figuring something out. Um, I'm honored. I'm excited. I'm enthusiastic. You have a great fire department already. And um I look forward to helping out the citizens of Dawson County any way I can.
Questions from the board? Welcome aboard. Thank you. Hi, Dave.
Okay, I have one more important announcement. We have a birthday today that we'd like to uh celebrate. And that would be uh Mr. Cloud. So uh we also have one coming up on the ninth, which is the chairman's birthday. So if we combine those two, uh we'll sing them and give them a little celebration. So, Ms. Sharon.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday, God bless you. Happy birthday to you.
Good job. And as you can tell, she is much younger than me.
She's not been a commissioner yet.
She's only twenty-nine.
That's right.
Again. Alright.
Thank you, Chairman. That concludes my report.
Questions for the county manager? County attorney report.
Um, yes, sir. There's no public report tonight, but I understand there's an interest in a executive session for personnel.
Okay, so we will do that after our voting session. Alright, so that takes us to the end of our work session. We'll take about a ten-minute break and we will be back for our voting session. Thank you for your attendance.